This is one, Mike? This is mine?
I'm Sallie Ann Elizabeth.
So you're Andrew?
We have to get her, uh...
That's what it says. Oh.
Patty, Patty, has it ordered?
It's literally on my desk.
Okay. No, I'm just saying, we'll get your little name plate.
All right, I think we are on 5:06, and I'd like to call to order this regular business meeting of the Newmarket School Board. We'll begin this meeting, as we do all others, by doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in it. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice... Thank you. Before I move to public comment, I would like to welcome Ms. Bozek, who is our new student representative on the school board, so welcome. We look forward to having you with us this year, and Mr. Knight. So we will move to public comment. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? We'll give it one more minute, in case someone jumps in. Maybe this person. Rachel, we have a open, if you'd like to speak. Okay. All right, then we will close public comment at 5:07. We'll begin with the discussion items. Susan, if you could give us the school reopening update, that would be great.
Okay. So first, in your packet, there is a summary of a framework that we are recommending the board to consider for how we would approach making decisions about when to increase our level of safety protocols, and then when we may relax them. So we received some guidance from the state. And I'm struggling to find that part of my report. Here we go. On August the 11th, and this was in one of their meetings that they have with school leaders, where they provide us with, you know, direction and time exchanges. You know, and they receive a number of phone calls from us, asking, you know, support, to help us understand what the implications are. Going on from a public health standpoint, then they follow up with these meetings to help share with us information. So, of course, everybody knows that the Delta variant, we've all heard, is highly contagious. And as we look around us in our state, on the public health maps, which I'll share with you shortly, you can see that every, every region in the area is experiencing high levels of transmission. So I guess the first question was, well, what, how do we define substantial or high transmission? And so I'm going to show you on their website where that definition comes from. But for the viewing audience now, they define it as a region has substantial levels of community transmission if either cases over the last 14 days per 100,000 in population is greater than 100, or the test positivity rate over the last seven days is greater than 10%. And then they go on to talk about vaccination rates, and as we, we've heard this term frequently... Is it not working? That they've encouraged members of the public to seek out vaccinations because that is the most effective way to mitigate the transmission of this virus within our communities. So herd immunity, or what they would consider to be high levels of vaccination, would be at 80%. So if the community reaches 80% of its population being fully vaccinated, not just with one shot, but fully vaccinated, then we, we could have some measure of comfort that, that are, you know, this high-level protection in our community would allow us to kind of lower our level of protocol. So what I shared with you here is a little framework based on these definitions. And the framework allows us to look at local data, which was something that there was, you know, a lot of kind of support for in the community when we put this plan together, that what we would do is look at local data. Last year, we were focusing our attention on using CDC data. And sometimes what was happening in other areas is reflective of what was happening here. So this framework allows us to look at local data when making our decisions. The other advantage of this is that this information is available to everybody. It is generated by our public health departments. It's, they're getting their information from healthcare providers in the area, and, and they're reporting it out in a way that everybody can see. So it, it made sense, at least in my mind, that we use some of these data points to be able to help us inform our decision-making. So the way the framework would work is that if transmission is high in the seacoast region, I'll show you how that's defined, or if it's high here in Newmarket, based on these definitions, that universal masking indoors would be required. But when there is moderate or low transmission, and/or we have 80% or more of our community vaccinated, then those would be the trigger points for moving to optional masking. And I just want to repeat that this is for indoor masking. Outdoors, it's going to be, remain optional. For buses, it's required. TSA regulates publication, and they're the ones that have jurisdiction over our buses. So on buses, it would be mandatory until those regulations change. But for us here on campus, that would, those would be the trigger points. So if transmission rates are low or moderate in Newmarket, but moderate at the seacoast region for 14 consecutive days, or if transmission is low in Newmarket, and low in the seacoast, that that's when we would dial back and relax, and go back to optional masking indoors. So I just want to, you know, you know, people might feel, well, you know, now that it's high, it's always going to stay high, but that's not been the nature of the virus. Over the summer, we were in low, and only became moderate a couple of weeks ago. So if, if we go to universal masking, which is what's being recommended by Dr. Chan and his team for when we are, then that, you know, will provide us with some protection so that the virus is then not being transmitted, and then it's not rising. So if we can contain it at the local level, then our numbers should go back down to moderate. And when they do, you know, then we would go to optional masking. So we, we heard that for the students that are 12 and under, that vaccinations will likely be available, but not until late November, early December. So, you know, it's going to be a little bit before those students will have access to vaccinations. And I also, our numbers at the end of April, after our vaccination clinics last year, we had 88% of our staff at that time, fully vaccinated. So we actually have herd immunity amongst our staff members. So that's good. And after the vaccination clinics, when we had staff vaccinated, there wasn't a situation that arose after that point where we would have had to have pivoted to remote as a result of, of any infections or quarantines from, from our existing staff. So that's, that gives us some degree of confidence that if we follow the protocols that we have, we'll be able to keep students in school. And I think all of you know that I feel that students need to be in school. And we want to do everything we can to keep them here. So if we follow this framework, I think it will help to inform our decisions, and it'll be based on science and local data. Parents, so everybody can, can monitor this if they wish. I look at these numbers every day. They don't update them every day necessarily. Today, at least when I looked earlier, they hadn't updated them from yesterday, so... But they, they do do this multiple times in the week. And, and the other thing I do want to mention, I gave an example in my report of how that would play out if we look at the data, and I wanted to show you where the data comes from off of this website. I showed it to parents last night. I shared it with staff last Thursday so they could see. I also sent links to everybody so that they can, they can take a peek. But there's a lot of data that's on this website, and, and so knowing exactly where to find it, I think, is important. So if you'll indulge me, I will hop on the website now. Okay, so if you click on the link that I provided in my report, and I sent out to parents, it'll take you right here to this page.
Is that the COVID-19?
This is the COVID new...
...dashboard link?
Okay. So when you click on that, it takes you right here. And the first thing you'll see are these maps here. The first map is divided into county. The second map is by public health region. And so when I say we're looking at the seacoast region, the seacoast region information is right here. I talked to Steve Fornier, our town administrator, about which, you know, area we should be focusing our attention on. He recommended this. He said because this excludes large communities that are included if we go by county, that aren't really germane to what's going on here in our areas. And he also said that, you know, when we're looking at this, that members of our community would be going out into the surrounding communities here, and they're included in this region. So if we're playing sports, if, if you're going out to dinner, or you're shopping locally, you would be going in the towns that are in the seacoast region. So that's why we're going to focus in on what's happening in the seacoast region, and then what's happening here in Newmarket. So this is, this is where that, that information would be located. Okay, so I'd also want to show you here that substantial, if you, if you toggle over these colors, you know, minimal, moderate, and substantial, you'll see that up pops a definition of how they define that. In my report, I, I just verbatim wrote what the definition is for substantial. You can read it yourself. It's verbatim, exactly how they're describing it. So based on this definition, what we need to look at is new cases over the last 14 days. So if you go up, it's about the sixth item down, you'll see new cases last 14 days. So what you're going to do is you're going to click on that button, and you're going to wait about three hours. No, you're going to wait a few minutes. Well, it, oh, look at, that was quick. It's quicker than it is on my device. So if we go here, it says cases in the last 14 days. If we're looking at the seacoast region, it's 350, so they have updated it. So I don't remember the number yesterday, but it's, it's up, it's down, it's up, it's down. But one thing is for certain, it's over 100. Okay? So in the seacoast region, and all the communities around us right now, as of today, it's considered to be high, just based on that factor. So if you, if you look at the map, I'm going to say to my right, to your right, you'll see it divided by towns. So to find Newmarket, you just scroll over Newmarket, and you can see it's 28 cases. So yesterday, it was 23; the day before, it was 22. Be 12, you know. But no matter what the number is, over the last week or so, it's been substantial. So this is where the number comes from. So when we're looking at that data point, that's, that's where you would find that information. So now we go to the second part of the definition. So just by that portion of the definition, we're in high. But I just want to show everybody where the positivity rate information is. So the PCR test is three, three down, the third toggle down. And so that's PCR, test positivity rate over the last seven days. Again, positivity rate over seven days, and it's the same, same process. So for the seacoast area, it's 6.1%, and for Newmarket, it looks like they don't have it posted. Let's see, yeah. Yep. So, and this happens from time to time. The last two days, when I've checked, Newmarket's information hasn't been up. And I don't know what causes it to be grayed out and not available, and when it is. It's been available up until two days ago. Either way, at this particular point, based on just the 14-day active cases, we would be in high community transmission. So then the other factor that's in the framework is vaccinations. So I'm just going to go right here to vaccinations, on the same website. Give it a, apparently, just a few seconds compared to my laptop.
So all the superintendents met again on the Zoom call with Dr. Chan?
It's, it's sponsored by Dr. Chan, and, and it's for school leaders, and nurses. Yeah, the school and daycares. Yep. And this was on the 11th, and so they published this, you know, information. They showed us where to get the information about vaccinations. So now we have the vaccination information. But when you get to this page, you have to make a few adjustments. So it's, it's currently set for total individuals, total, total individuals fully vaccinated. But, but if you go to this carrot, you can also see how many have at least received one vaccination. So both of those pieces are really good information, because it tells you how many people are actively pursuing vaccinations. But right now, we're going to look at fully vaccinated, because that's the way they define it. You're going to have to go over it. Show as, instead of as individuals, because they show it as a percentage, which is 80%. We need to change to Hampshire residents. And then when it catches up, then we'll change the geographical location to town, and then we'll be able to look at Newmarket and the seacoast again. Or Newmarket.
Do you know if the percentage is based on the population that's eligible for vaccine, or the entire population?
Yes. Eligible for vaccine. I asked that question.
Okay.
So this is, our population of 9, 4, 4, 5, I was told, are the number of residents that are eligible.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the kiddos that are 12 and under wouldn't be in the number right now.
So it'd be fair to assume that when 12 and under can receive the vaccine, that percent's going to go initially down?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would suspect so, until they're able to get fully vaccinated. But what we can do then with this, because we can look at vaccination according to who's gotten one shot, it'll give us a sense of, you know, how many are in the process of getting vaccinated, which will be really important, because unless something's changed, they said that, you know, if you get the Pfizer, I don't know about all of them, but we got Pfizer here, that we had about 80% kind of saturation for being safe. So, so here we'll go down. As you can see, it defaults to Nashua, which of course is not really relevant to us. So we'll change it to town. And you have to toggle each, and you can't do them simultaneously. So it's, it's a little bit of a latency between each toggle. But I just really want to demonstrate again tonight where this information is found, so that if anybody has any questions. And once we open school, you know, we can take this, and I can do screenshots and point to the very different locations. I just, I don't have time to do that right now. Okay. So here we are at towns. And the thing that's really kind of interesting about this is, is if you toggle over Newmarket, you can see in the bottom corner here that it's 55.4%. I'm not sure, what did my report say as of last Friday? I think that number's going up.
55.3.
Yeah. So we're, we're up a tenth of a point there. But if I click on this, so I just want to show this, if you click on it, then the numbers here by age band, age group band, are for Newmarket specifically. So if you roll over it now, we can see that 48.3% of the children that are aged 12 to 19 that live here in Newmarket are fully vaccinated. When I looked earlier to, actually, I'm not sure what the number is now, because I did just, I just, just did just update this. But when I looked earlier today, we were up to 56.2, or one or two, that have at least had one shot. So that means like in the next few weeks, that that number's going to go from 48, that's up 8%. So that's good. That means that kiddos that are of high school age are actively getting vaccinated. So that's really good. And, you know, the higher that number is, we know the better chances are that transmission will not occur, and children will not get sick in the same way. And then the quarantine requirements won't be, you know, as, as significant as they would be if kids weren't vaccinated. So all of these things are really favorable for us to be able to say in school, so, so that's really good news. I think the more surprising number, when I was looking at this, is, is the category of 20 to 29. It's the, the category that's been eligible for vaccination for, well, at least since March. And it's the lowest of our age groups in terms of level of vaccination. And of course, a lot of these have kids in our, in our, in our schools, so... And then 30 to 39 is also lower than some of the other bands. And that would be our parent. So only 39.6% of Newmarket adults ages 20 to 29 are, are fully vaccinated this time. And then you can just toggle through, I won't go through each one, but I just want you to see what those numbers look like. So, so they'll, they'll change as, as we get more, more folks vaccinated, and, you know, everybody can kind of track that. And I know in my conversations with Steve, that he's working with Lamprey to, you know, spin up some more clinics, and advertise, and encourage people to get vaccinated, so...
I think the van is coming on the 23rd of September as well, to the Town Hall of the Vaccination Van. It's good to have this, Susan, because it gives us data on, to understand how things are being decided. That's helpful for me.
Can you see, like, if we're getting, based on how much has changed, is, can you see us, like, saying, okay, we don't need masks on Monday? But then, or I need masks on Monday, and then not needing them on Wednesday, but then needing them again on Friday? Like, can you see it change that much?
So where the framework works is that we would need to be in moderate for 14 days. So it's not going to be herky-jerky like that.
Okay.
So right now, you know, people said, right now, our plan calls for optional masks. On Friday, I'll look at the numbers, and if the numbers continue with this trend, and it's been in this, you know... And I'll send a note out to parents and say, okay, it's going to have to be universal masking when we open school. And once it's been in the moderate, you know, for, or, or low for 14 days, then I'll send out another letter out to the community, to staff, saying, okay, as of this day, we will be trans... We will change our protocol back to optional masking. Of course, when we go optional masking, that does not apply, sorry, that, that does not apply to buses. Buses are not in our jurisdiction.
So by Friday, you'll look at the numbers. Friday, people will know. We're not giving the time, because it depends on how often it's updated. So we're going to see between Friday and Saturday, you're going to let families know what Monday's going to look like. And that will go for the week, because we need to keep the numbers for 14 days.
That will go until it turns to moderate, and it stays at moderate. So I'm not going to send out an email every week, right? And we can all mod, you know, hit, and, you know, if I'm sending out a letter, which I do every couple of weeks anyways, I can say, we've had X number of days of moderate, or whatever. I'm not going to, you know, shy away from sharing in my reports, you know, where we're at on those things. But, you know, this way, everybody can kind of take a peek at it themselves. The other thing I also want to say, again, in terms of mask... The other thing I also want to say again, in terms of masking and any protocols related to athletics, so when we go and play games and such, we'll follow NHI AA guidance. Right now, no masking is required. So I just want to remind people that that is already in our plan. That is what we agreed to. And so that's how the framework would work. If vaccinations come up, great. That's another, you know, way that we can get back to optional masking. I think with adding the masking upfront, especially with kids coming together from all kinds of different places around the country, and I know some have been traveling overseas, that I think that it probably makes good sense for folks to, you know, any rise would be captured since transmission when we're wearing masks has proven to be a really great safety strategy for us. So that's how the protocol would work.
As some people are sort of in vacation mode and summer mode, it might be good if we, with the Friday announcement, use all the available communication methods so people are sure to get the message. Just more information is better than less, I would think, in this case, so that no one gets caught off guard on Tuesday.
So I do this. So if we're wearing masks and it gets moderate, the level of transmission in Newmarket is lower moderate and the seacoast is lower moderate, but it has to be for 14 days if you no mask after 14 days? Is the inverse true where if we're at moderate and we go to high, so it's 14 days of continued high?
No, that's a good question. No, that wasn't, but it might be. I know what you're saying. So what you want to do is you want to catch an anomaly, right? If there's a one-day spike, you don't want to be reacting to that. But you don't want to be waiting 14 days to make a decision either if it's ramping up. So, you know, maybe we want to consider after, you know, two or three days of a trend of substantial, that then we would shift to mask. That might, something like that. I mean, I don't know how you feel about that, but that way you're avoiding moderate, moderate. And then all of a sudden, there's a spike and then you start the count over. That kind of doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I'll tell you, the other thing is that you might have a spike in the region, the way this framework works. So one-day spike and then it goes back to moderate, but we're moderate here. Maybe you'd have a little bit of, that would seem like a little bit of a reaction, yeah.
So if in Newmarket, it's lower moderate and the seacoast, it's lower moderate, no mask?
Optional.
Optional.
I'm sorry, optional, excuse me, optional. If in Newmarket, it's low, seacoast, it's high, mask would be required. And then if it's high in Newmarket and on the seacoast, mask would be required. So that makes sense as far as Newmarket. I mean, I understand that we're, there's going to be, the seacoast is probably going to be a leading indicator for where Newmarket's going.
And with UNH coming back in sessions, Steve recommended that.
Are they requiring vaccines? Do we know?
I don't know.
I doubt it.
No, UNH is not.
They're not.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I think they test twice a week, right?
I think something like that.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of inclined, like, if Newmarket was low for 14 days and the seacoast continued to be high for 14 days, like, maybe we consider at that point, switching back to optional if we're not seeing Newmarket trending the way the seacoast is trending. We just don't know how it's going to be, who's going to be trending what, unfortunately, but.
And it's just tough, given, you know, given the fact, leaving here, I could be in three different towns within not very much time. And so, you know, I think we got, you have to sort of look at the region because as Susan said, there's different practices, singing groups, drama troops, whatever.
I mean, we also remember we have a homeless population that might be living in shelters out of town or might be living someplace else out of town. Their children are coming here. We always have to keep that in mind.
That's a good, that's a good point, Elizabeth, that I had not even thought of.
And I guess that's why I was thinking for two weeks, we would have an indicator whether or not what's happening in the seacoast is being reflected in Newmarket.
Well, I'm sure this is a conversation that's just going to be going until this thing fades away and we can have another conversation about that. So throwing, just kind of saying, okay, well, let's pay attention to it. If we stay, my, I think Thanksgiving is when we're going to see it spike. Like, but, okay, nothing would. I just say we pay attention and that's what we've been doing.
But I don't know that we will spike. I guess.
I hope we don't.
I just, I don't know. I look at last year and where we were last year and what happened. And then I look at mitigating factors like we're vaccinated. A good portion of the population is vaccinated. And most of the time that we had to flip out last year was at the junior, senior high school amongst the population that right now, it looks like 56 percent are going to be vaccinated coming back. And there was never transmission within us. Of course, we wore masks that entire, you know, time. And most of the transmission, and when we did contact tracing, was as a result of students hanging out together outside of school. So when contact tracing happened and/or sports, right? So when the basketball team, you know, we had to, you know, bow out of some games because of quarantining, that was because of that circumstance. But we were able to isolate that, you know? We were able to isolate that. And the impact of that was just on the basketball team when we did that. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So now we're in a very different place. So I feel, I don't know who, I'm not, you know, I don't have any magic here. But when I look at what our experience was, it seems reasonable that, you know, if we follow, we'll try it. I mean, if it doesn't seem to be making sense, we can certainly revisit it again. But this is based on the recommendation of the state, you know, in conversation with Steve, who is our emergency management director for the town. He's the one that recommended the 14 days. He thought that that made a lot of sense based on what he's seeing in the region and how what happens in the region impacts us here. With the idea, you know, that we do everything possible to keep our kids here in school. Kids need to be in school. Families need to be able to go to work. And having some measure of assurance that there's a way that we're going to manage this when we see an increase, you know, to high levels of transmission, I think gives people comfort and helps people to be able to see, you know, how those decisions are going to be made. So again, it's just based on the experience of multiple parties and recommendations from folks that.
Which I think we need to take into account and then, you know, use our rationale. And like, so for instance, if there's, we, so 28, I'm not going to admit some words, is alarming. And I think there's kind of no question that we need masks at elementary school. And I guess maybe we can talk about whether we're allowed to do separate policies at the middle, junior, or junior high rather and then elementary. So, but if we were to say 10 cases and those 10 cases were all in an assisted or senior living facility, then I'm not as concerned with, you know, having the number of 10 for 14 days. We have round numbers of 10.
Well, when we look at vaccination in those, for the age groups that are in the senior facilities, you can see they're very high.
Yeah, it's about 80 percent, which is 80 people, 80.
So an outbreak there is really highly unlikely because of the level of vaccination. They're at herd immunity for the most part in those, you know, 91 percent of 69, yeah. So again, I, you know.
You previously mentioned that you are privy to within town, kind of, to the outbreaks that are occurring?
I.
Or are you able to?
I'm familiar with whether it's, I can learn whether or not it is in a congregate facility. And if it isn't. And then because parents tend to call and tell us what's going on, I have a good sense of where cases are presenting. But I don't know where every single one is at any time or what address it is or anything like that. I know that much of the transmission right now is within our, the population that we would probably see that are unvaccinated.
And I, you know, I guarantee your point, I tend to sort of err on the side of caution and overly cautious because, you know, when you think of the younger ones that cannot be vaccinated, but then we're seeing breakthrough cases in teens. And so, you know, that's why I think it might, it makes sense to have a universal process for all at this point.
Yeah, I guess my, kind of my assumptions, we're never really going to get to 80 percent in the community, unfortunately. Hopefully we do, it'd be fantastic. I just think the way this has become, what it's become, I'm not sure we're going to get that high. So at some point, we need to make the assumption that, not the assumption, some people, we need to make the decision that we're recommending it, but what people decide to do for themselves, if they're eligible to get vaccinated and they choose not to, at some point, we're going to have to say, you know, we can't wear masks wherever those people are just taking responsibility for themselves. So now, Delta variant is significantly more contagious. There are some breakthrough cases, which is alarming. But so kind of at what point do we need to start thinking about that? Do we start saying, hey? I mean, because to be honest with you, a few days ago, I was thinking, let's do it optional in the elementary school, kind of see where it goes and the optional for the junior high. Hearing this, I'm like, I don't think we can do that with the elementary school. I think it needs to be, certainly with 28 percent, or 28, sorry, people, it needs to be, if it maintains over 14 days, it needs to be mandatory going into the year. Not junior high, I'm kind of like, all eligible.
The middle schools aren't though, are they? The 12-year-olds?
Sixth graders are not and some seventh graders are not.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And they're going to be on the same school together.
Yeah, in which case you need to, yeah.
And also, I think one thing we have to think about with kids is, you know, I was the one that took my child to get vaccinated and made that decision for her. I may not make that decision. And then we have to think about those people too, for the kids.
We do, but at some point, we need to say, hey, you know, these people are making a decision for their kids and they're going to make it.
I think that's kind of what we heard everybody say, right? If we, at the time that we put our plan forward, we were in a decline in terms of transmission. And if you're in a state of decline, which is low or moderate, you know, it's like low, we all feel comfortable. Everybody communicated that. Students communicated that, you know, in this environment right now, we feel comfortable. Staff felt comfortable and families felt comfortable. Now we moved to moderate, right? So we all start looking around to see, you know, what does this mean for us? What are the implications? And now we're at high, right? So high means that there is a sense of urgency. And I think that is why Dr. Chan and the state and pretty much every public health official is saying that masking in schools is recommended. And regardless of vaccination status, and that's what all of those parties who are much more knowledgeable than any of us sitting here at this table are, you know, recommending for us to do to keep us safe. And the other thing I just want to emphasize is that we can certainly roll the dice. And the implications for that are that it's likely that kids will be in a position with lots of more quarantines. And once we get to a point where we have lots more quarantines and we have to be having conversations about then, you know, perhaps going remote, which is, you know, not at all desirable and/or educationally the direction I would want for our kids and for our families. So those are some of the implications.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, to be honest with you, I've forgotten the age groups of six and seven-year-olds. And I think because of that, we really don't have an option with the level that we're at now. Once we get to around 10 or 15, I think maybe we should rethink if it's been trending downwards.
And I think that's, that's the benefit of Susan looking at it on a daily basis to see where we're going, where we're trending, to make the pivots when we're able to do them as soon as possible.
And then actually, glad you brought up remote. Last night, you mentioned switching to remote and I apologize if I didn't completely hear it. At what point do you envision the entire school pivoting to remote? So the assumption that staff hopefully aren't giving the vaccination levels that far.
Well, I'm hoping we're not going to ever pivot to remote again, but that's just my desire.
But if you, if, for instance, so we're cohorting by grade. If so, for instance, grade six, seven, and eight, or how, would we do it? If they're, you know, when, would you kind of, what could you foresee causing us to pivot entirely to remote?
I guess if there was some kind of an outbreak and the likelihood of an outbreak is diminished if we're having universal masking when there's high levels of transmission.
Listen, you define outbreak, so we can have an outbreak in sixth grade only, right? Would we go and go for the entire school for that?
Highly unlikely. That's why we're cohorting by grade. But it doesn't, you know, to answer a question, when there's so many variables, one of the things that we absolutely learned last year is every time that there was a case, it was unique.
No, and I think what I'm trying to do is not to hold you to something, but to set some expectations for the communities that would say, hey, just, you know, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it. It is entirely possible that, I don't know, if we had breakthrough cases with half the staff, we'd go remote if we had, you know, two or three grade levels.
Right, but if I say it's going to be this right now and the circumstances are different, then people get all upset because the superintendent didn't condition this is what would happen. And I can't guarantee that that would be the choice at that time. What I can say is that we work with the public health department with the state. And so when there's a case, we're working with them. And they're the ones that are really driving who gets quarantined for how many days. You know, they're the ones that determine whether we have a hotspot or an outbreak. And they have definitions. I don't know what that definition is, it's off the top of my head. I mean, I'm sure I could dig it up when they would consider that. But I can say from a teaching and learning perspective, if there is a substantial number of students out in a classroom, let's just say it's third grade, and a significant number of them are in quarantine, teaching and supporting half of your students, so let's say 10 students remotely, or not remotely, but in quarantine, and then trying to teach the others live, it may become, the quality of the learning for both groups would probably be diminished. And at that point, you know, we would want to consider transitioning to remote in that particular situation. I don't want to transition to remote if there's a way to educate our kids at a quality level.
No, and I think that's a great example that kind of, in my mind, helps me understand what kind of, what kind of decision-making might go into us.
Right. So it's what has it become untenable to be able to do it and provide a quality experience for students both, on both sides of the equation? So we're cohorting by grade level. And the idea here is that, especially in, you know, pre-K through A, that there won't be intermixing of those students with other grades. So when we're looking at music, as Principal Dalton explained, we're taking music classes, the sixth grade's going to take music. It's not going to be sixth grade intermixed with, you know, seventh and eighth grade. And so our scheduling becomes a little complex so that we can keep kids in those cohorts. And so, you know, at a certain point, if, you know, if the next level would be that there was some kind of a multiple kind of, I guess, at the junior, senior high, you could have those kids moving from class to class and the classes are intermixing, that it could impact more than one grade. But, you know, again, you know, if we're at high levels of transmission and we're masking, those kids aren't vaccinated. So, you know, the level of quarantine, the number of days of quarantine would be higher. But I also want to say that quarantine looks different than last year, that it's not 14 days, it's 10 days. That after three to five days, the nurses are saying that a child could get tested and if they're asymptomatic and it comes back negative, that they can return. I think in some cases, they have to wear a mask and in some cases, maybe not. So that the number of days in quarantine would be less than last year also. So I think that's important for people to know.
Do you know, as far as with staffing, where we're at this year compared to last year? So say, I should pick on the third grade again, say the third grade has to go out, unfortunately, remote. There's a certain amount of support staff that work with them and also work with other grades, I assume. Like, are we at a level where having one grade go out probably will cascade into other, you know, other classes and other situations where it causes more people to have to go remote or?
I don't think that that would be, I can't foresee that as being a scenario, but like, you know, like I said.
Nothing's concrete, I'm just trying to get an idea, okay.
I think it's more at the high school level where they're not cohorting, right? At the high school level, you can't cohort and run your programs that way because, you know, kids are taking all kinds of different courses. And it's not necessarily a set program the way the. And it's not necessarily a set program the way the lower grade levels are. So, in that case, it's a little bit more complicated, where kids are really commingling, not even just by grade level, but between grade level. But even last year, that was true, and, um, last year, it was a volume situation, and/or the, the type of people that were impacted, you know, that, that influenced our decisions to have to go out, there just was no choice. If we had a choice, we made it to, you know, to stay, to stay in, but there, but it was really, you know, at one time, as you all know, if you remember from last year, we had forty students that were quarantined. It wasn't possible to continue to run the high school's schedule and support those kids. Sometimes it was an essential employee that we couldn't open the building if we didn't have that, that, that type of an employee in the, in, in. So, i- i- it, it, there's a whole range of, of reasons. But, again, we are almost ninety percent of our staff are vaccinated, so some of those scenarios are just not scenarios this year, right? And that's the good part, unless there's breakthrough, and we heard the Delta variant, that could be. We also heard that boosters, you know, are coming our way, and we'll run clinics and get everybody vaccinated and stay healthy. We'll do the same for, for students, you know, run clinics and, and do whatever we can to, to support families and kiddos and, you know, try to keep us rocking and rolling in, on campus.
Great, thank you, and thank you and administration and the nurses for so much time last night. It was a long meeting, and I wasn't actually at it, I was at home, so I can imagine it was difficult.
Any other questions about this?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification?
Yes.
When you vote, if, if, if that is your wish, can you just clarify around when, how many days of high? You know, is it one day, are we talking, what is the board's? I, I mean, I think that if there's a one-day spike over fourteen days, but it's, it's an anomaly, I, I-
So, in other words, the inverse, what we talked about earlier, when it starts, yeah.
We should just clarify that. We shouldn't allow multiple, multiple days of, you know, that, that would be-
I haven't looked at this for a while, do you have an idea of how, how often they update it?
Sometimes they do it daily, but it could be two days in between when they do it, so that's a good point, too. So, if it's high.
I mean, should we say, this, this is getting into the weeds, but if, if there's a high, we'll have a minimum of number of mask days, so it's like, you know, if it spikes to a high, then maybe three or five days or whatever, the rest of the week, and then it'll be reassessed, so that we don't have to do it.
Like, so, maybe like two consecutive days?
Two consecutive days, three, five, something like that.
So, two consecutive cycles, we'll call it, like, because, like, if I look today and they haven't updated it, then that's yesterday's data. So, it would be two cycles at high triggers going to universal masking.
Yes.
But I think once you go to four, five, I don't think it's-
Too much, it's, we, we, the horse is out of the barn.
I think you kinda have to- Yeah, I don't think you can say, it's a two-day, I don't think you can say it's masked for the rest of the-
Millennium.
Well, no, but I'm saying, like, if it happens Thursday, Friday, then Monday, Tuesday, I think you'd go masked longer than-
Yes, that seems fair. Yes.
So, two cycles of high triggers, universal masking. And then, it, you go fourteen days-
I think fourteen days.
At moderate, and then you transition back to optional.
Cause that, cause if we keep the numbers consistent to the fourteen days, then it's not a question of, are we going up, are we coming down, fourteen days is what we're doing?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I hate to impose on the people if I'm going to need to, and I hardly ever have to wear a mask, and I can imagine, can't even imagine what's like. I suppose it's not responsible, you tell them.
Let's, let's keep it both with fourteen, so it's a consistent. So, if we, if we get to two cycle, Ed, Gary, can you tell me if I have a wrong?
Two cycles, two cycles of, of high-
Yep.
Triggers universal masking.
And we'll do that for fourteen days, from that point, is that right?
Oh, so universal masking for fourteen days after the two days?
Yes.
Well-
No, I don't know.
I think it's universal, the way the framework works is that, once it's triggered, you go to moderate for fourteen days, and that's what, after the fourteen days, and the coast, it's like the coast is clearly clear.
Yes, 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 yes.
Now, we can transition back, so it's two cycles of high triggers universal masking, and then that way, if it's, you know, it's just a blip, and it's not a trend-
Right. Then we'll take it off.
Then, then-
And it's fourteen days of moderate.
Yes.
Then it comes off.
Then it becomes optional.
Option.
Yeah.
And that's a, both moderate, both, I mean, a new market and a sequel.
Right.
We see, make sure we-
So, why don't we go ahead and vote on this, since it's all in our minds?
Yes.
I seek a motion to approve the school opening updates with the caveat listed, just now.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Swanson, a second from Ms. McKenney, to approve the school opening updates with the caveat that we discussed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved unanimously, four zero.
Sorry, just a point of order, do we need to, uh, Mrs. Durant's been, excuse?
I've been at the beginning.
Oh, you did, you're right.
Yep, I did. Um, anything else? Jana, I think the floor is yours, we can move into the exciting world of the capital improvement plan.
All right, well, thank you. So, for those of you who've been on the board before, and, and most of you probably in town, you're aware that the town and the school put together a capital improvement program committee, and that annually, they kind of look at a six-year window of time and project out in the rationale for that, is so that, because we all are the same tax base, that it's great to give an idea of what type of projects are on the horizon in all areas, not just in one. So, what I've included in the packet, what we've included in the packet for you this year, these are the forms that we had last year, and we just have the dates and the mountain populated. But I bring them forward to you just because, you know, we have had quite a year, and priorities have shifted a little bit. And I have until, we have until the end of this week to get these to them, but in the event that any of the board wanted to consider some other projects that we did implement, or wanted to look at the, the funding of the projects that we did implement last year, we wanted to provide you an opportunity to kind of, um, have. So, five, five of the projects are the same, um, from last year. We had, um, looked at the courtyard, at the junior senior high, had the, um, project we've been doing.
Thank you for being on top of it, Hillary, we appreciate it.
Jana's always been the quiet one.
Sorry about that, so, um, I hope everyone can hear now. So, uh, the courtyard was one of the items we all agreed we wanted to look at. An expansion for, um, the junior senior high parking lot was another idea that we had last year. Of course, everyone's familiar with our ongoing pro- um, playground project that the PTA has graciously been working to raise funds for. And the taxpayers in this town have supported with a warrant article for the last two cycles, which is great. We also had a, um, a proposal for a turf-type of field, we have some challenges with our, our wet, the wetness of our field that truncates some of our seasons, so that was, um, one of the items. And then, um, we had a project to renovate some, some of our classrooms at the elementary school that weren't touched by the renovation project. Pleased to announce that we were able to finish six floors this summer.
Oh, nice.
That was appropriated last year. I believe we'll be looking to do the remainder, there were twelve, so looking to add that to this year's budget to get the other ones done. But they look great, they were able to follow the existing pattern, um, with some nice colors for the kids. Everything's been waxed, and it's shiny and ready to go. And we even purchased some little, uh, foot socks to go on the chairs to keep them extra shiny. So, um, we're really excited about that, uh, the facilities are, are looking very good. We've had to, um, use some outsourced services, but that's great. So, the new one that we brought up, this will also be familiar to the board, I believe it might have been in, um, May that Dr. Givens mentioned that we had some infrastructure challenges over at the elementary school, um, that we discovered as we were trying to find some air conditioning solutions. One of them was the, um, the electrical, we had an older circuit that has seen better days. Uh, in order to, uh, use the air conditioners, we had to be very creative with our plugs and our, where we had our cords running from. And in addition to that, some of those windows over there, I believe, were, were never looked at or, or touched. So, we started to look at these projects, um, and you'll notice that my costs are blank, unless our costs. We have run into some challenges in getting people estimates due to the same reasons that we're fighting for staffing and all sorts of things. So, what we're hoping to do is, um, I'm going to be reaching back out to our architect, um, to see if she could maybe ballpark for us some things to put on to this form, um, for Friday, but we'll, we will continue to try and get better cost estimates as we go along and as we have the opportunity to do so. So, those are basically, in a nutshell, what, what we have for, on the school side, the town, of course, has their projects, um, the water department has theirs. So, we're just looking to kind of get the board to offer any feedback, and let us know if this is the direction you would like us to go for this year.
So, I noticed, um, the parking lot addition was desire, went from desirable to urgent due to the, um, COVID exp- uh, COVID-related issues. I'm assuming this isn't gonna be done this year, because, well, it's a CIP project, so it's probably not gonna be done this year. Are we still thinking it's gonna be urgent in two years, three years, four years?
You're correct, in that last year, it bumped to an urgent, because if you recall, we had to have additional staff members to come and cover lunches and things, and we just didn't have a space. At this time, Dr. Givens can probably speak to the staffing over there a little bit better than I can, but my understanding is that we're, we have similar numbers of people prior to COVID, um, you can correct me if-
We have, we have a few more, because we've had to add staffing again to support our, um, you know, pandemic environment, so there are more, but not as many as last year.
Not as many as last year, yeah.
But we're also short-staffed in many areas that, uh, you know, are causing us some challenges as well. And once, it, one, if and when those positions are filled, then we'll, we'll need more parking spaces for that, too, so, it's fluid.
Forgive me, as, I may show my ignorance here, well, when, when you talk about the capital improvement pro- program, are these things on the horizon, and a goal is to do these, or is it that these are already paid, or are you saying it finished then?
I'll let you address that.
So, my understanding is that the capital improvement committee is a, uh, a group that's established by the town, and, and for us to be able to access revenues that are collected from, um, you know, new, new building, um, and the fees that they collect for those-
Impact fees, that's the word, yeah.
Impact fees, thank you.
I was just trying to think of it, too.
We have to submit these, they're not funded, they're just, they have to include these projects as part of their plan, and, uh, but source for that, so it, it doesn't allow us access to a funding source, so most, mostly, we've, you know, addressed these issues through, you know, our operating budget by picking away at, okay, we're gonna do so many elementary school floors this year, and then next year, we're gonna do so many more, and then next year, we're gonna do electrical, and the next year, so we build some of the, um, some of these recurring maintenance costs into our budget. And then, the other source would be either your, um, we have some trust funds, so if we really got up against it here, then we could access our trust funds, or you could put a warrant article before the town and say, you know, we wanna do this particular project, and then the towns could vote up or down on whether or not they, they provide us with funding for it. So, there's a few different mechanisms, I think the other thing that's good about it, though, is that occasionally, grant monies become available from time to time for different projects. And, um, if that's the case, then, you know, you already have these kind of queued up a little bit, and you can, you can take advantage of, of funding sources when they, they might arise. But, but the, the purpose of us going through this is to be able to access impact fees.
So, it's like, uh, like in a house, like, I, like, I would have, like, all these things I want to do in my house, I have a plan for it, and when money comes available, I'll tackle each individual on a separate way type thing?
Yeah, it's kind of like, it's kind of like a master plan thought, sort of. It's, it's so that major capital things don't all happen at the same time.
Okay.
Um, so that the school's not trying to do one thing at the same time that the town offices are. My question, though, is about the windows and the elec- electrical, is that something we should look to adding to the operating budget? If that's even a possibility, much like we did the floors, just so we can get that rectified.
I think as we look at this, this year, as soon as we can get school open, we can kind of talk about, you know, budget for the upcoming year, but we do have some proceeds left in our, from our building project, and I think that, um, using that for some of these items that were,
It should qualify right there.
That were, that were kind of, uh, removed from the original project, um, to, you know, might be, might be a, one, um, vehicle for getting windows and maybe some electrical upgrade, it's, it really, you think about it, I was, you know, meeting with teachers yesterday, and walking through the buildings, and, you know, they, they were explaining to me that their sections of the building that we're talking about here were pre-technology age. So, if you go into these class, I don't wanna say out loud, you, you, come, come on a tour with me, how's that? Come on a tour with me, I don't want the fire department to get all upset, so. Hey, then we have lots of technology, but, but the, um, electricity wasn't set up to accommodate our needs today.
I suspect that I'm not an electrician in any stretch of form, um, but that the backbone will need to be done.
That's what Devon told us.
One unit, but the windows and stuff, we could probably pick at.
Okay.
That would be my assumption, but-
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's, it's definitely good to think about that, as we get schools open into the budget, to see what we can do, what makes the most logical sense, which I will, you know, defer to you guys to do that.
And the turf field. So, do you know if we, and I apologize, you probably don't know, but the carpenter property was across the street from the parking lot, and all that. And the proposal was to build on the former carpenter properties, is there even still space there to do that, do we know? Do you happen to know?
I think, well, there's definitely space there, I, it would depend, I think, maybe on the sizes of your fields.
And the wetland.
And the wetlands, yeah.
Right, the plan was to maybe make it just an extra spot. For, because we are limited in fields, and if we could have that one extra spot, cause you have the track team that practices inside the building, and so that, it's not a big field, but it's an extra practice field.
I know, it's just, um, I guess when you look at the price tag, and you think about all the things we need to do, it just seems so pie in the sky that I almost feel like, it's, I mean, it's a great idea if, if we hit the mega bucks as a town, or somebody, you know, donated a million dollars to, to the town, but I'm, I don't know, I just kind of feel like it's, it's an odd thing to even think about, given-
And who knows, maybe there would be some education exercise grant that-
Yeah, I mean, I suppose it doesn't hurt to have a placeholder for it.
That would allow us to utilize our skills for that purpose, and we have it planned. Um, I think, you know, I, if you look at the priority of the windows and the electrical over a field, it's no contest.
Oh, yeah, clearly, clearly, yeah. Yeah, clearly, yeah.
And parking, it's no contest, but I think it's, it's good to have some big, cause it may, it may never happen.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, I guess it doesn't hurt, just you look at it, and you're kind of like, yeah, I would love it, but-
And I don't even, I, truthfully, I don't know what that, the wetlands fields behind the parking lot would even allow.
That was a three-hour meeting, you don't remember that?
I, I tried to block it out.
And the, the quote, I'm sure, is way off now, cause that was-
Probably for most, all of these, at this point.
Any other questions about the capital improvement program, Sam?
That's how we learned why Riverbend was named Riverbend.
We did, that was, that was quite a meeting.
Oh, I guess the other one was, um, the classroom renovation that's existing and the new classroom renovation, both speak about electrical. I assume it's probably not a huge, I mean, I, much of, do we need to recalculate this one based on that one, or is it kind of like whichever one we do first?
Yeah, I, I think when this, this one was put together, they were kind of thinking we could, we could do it that way, but then after we delved a little bit deeper into the electrical system, I, I think we realized it's more than just adding a couple outlets here and there. It's really, um, a bigger, a bigger project than we would be able to do with just a classroom.
So, it doesn't hurt as a placeholder, but it'll probably be recalculated?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Then I think it might be appropriate to, uh, I seek a motion to approve the project to submit to the town capital improvement committee.
So, moved?
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKenney, and a second from Mr. Swanson, any more discussion? Hearing none, we move to the vote, all those in favor approving this plan, these options say aye, project.
Aye.
It approves, it's unanimous. The financial report, Jana.
Okay, well, we have concluded our financial audit for the fiscal year twenty-one. I would like to quickly make a shout-out to the team in the business office. It's very challenging when you have a, an audit- It's very challenging when you have a, an audit year, an audit that occurs so close to the end of the fiscal year. But that team really, um, really pulled it together. Were able to get, the auditors had earmarked five days for that and they were done in two and a half because of the planning and, um, and the work, the hard work of that group, so I just wanted to give them a little shout out. So our quarter fine, for financial reports, what you're seeing here, these actually have been, um, these are audited figures. That's not to say that audited, audited figures can't change between now and when the final report is issued, but it's, it's unlikely, um, that, that they would change in a material way. Um, so as we've done in the past for you, we've presented the expenditures, which is what we generally watch and track all year to you in two formats. The first one is in, um, the format of, um, categories that, that most people seem to feel kind of, uh, makes, make more sense when we talk about them, such as, um, salaries and benefits, operations, that kind of thing. So that's the first part that we present to you and then they're presented to you in another way, which is by function code. The function code is something that's defined by the New Hampshire state, um, financial accounting guidelines. So function codes eleven hundred, for example, is general education, twelve hundred is special education. And that's the way that we report it on the, to the state. Kind of like a crosswalk to allow you to get from the things that we really talk about to the way that we present on the state, so. So that, that's the first part. I've kind of highlighted for you some of the areas, uh, when, in our general fund. Many of these are very familiar to you where we had extra, we had budgeted monies that we were unable to expend. First and foremost, salaries, um, we, you've heard us speaking about our hiring challenges, uh, for, for, um, many positions. Any op, on the operations side, but in addition to that, there was programming, there were programming things that we couldn't, simply couldn't run. No co-curriculars, uh, limited athletics, professional development opportunities that we weren't able to allow our staff to go to. And, and field trips for our kids, so those are kind of our, our bigger pieces there. So when you look at that number, it kind of makes you feel sad because those are actually opportunities that were missed, um, by our students and staff this year. So in the benefits that went along with that, of course, when you don't have a higher position, you don't pay FICA or New Hampshire retirement or health insurance, so those things kind of track together as well. Um, and when you look at those two numbers together, it's, you know, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just right there that our budget that really was opportunity based. Um, we had some funding left over from, in our operations as well. There were, again, due to things that we couldn't, couldn't run, professional services we couldn't, we couldn't do. We also had a significant positive variance in special education due to a move out. We had one student that was tuitioned as an out of district, but left at the beginning of last year, so that also contributed to that amount. Um, and then another component of that, uh, relative to last, not this past June, but the June before, you voted to encumber some purchase order open amounts. When you encumbered that way and we carry it forward into the next budget, if we're not able to expend that money for the purposes that were voted, that money stays and it comes back. So there were, there were some things that came in a little under budget, most of them were project based things, but most significant amount among now those things. And I'd like to again, make a shout out. Our student services director, we had a Medicaid audit and they had indicated that they thought the obligation that we might have to pay was a hundred thousand dollars. And due to her hard work, um, and negotiating with the provider who was processing those claims at the time, she was able to reduce that by over ninety thousand dollars, so.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so that's a, that's another, um, another. To money that we had brought in that, that, that we're returning. And then finally, um, again, not, it won't be unknown or unexpected, uh, for you, but we had our warrant article that the taxpayers graciously approved. A little over four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from bond interest to do a series of projects. Among those, as you recall, furniture was one of those things and we simply couldn't even buy furniture because ours was in storage. So we had a warrant article for the next year to see if we could at least carry that part forward. So that was part of it, but in addition to that, we had several projects that we worked really hard on to contain costs during this year. One, one example of that was we had an electrical project that we had expected to cost around twenty-eight thousand. And basically we were able to get all of that done, um, to our satisfaction and meet that need for just over six thousand. So there was a, there was a long list of items that we had worked on, um, to try and bring that in and of course, this is the same as the other. We asked for that money for these purposes. If we don't use them for those purposes, they return to the tax base. So that was also a pretty significant component of what was left on our expenditures. Um, before I go on to revenues, does anyone have any questions about kind of like my summary of that? And there's more detail, um, further back about the expenditures in the line. Okay. Revenues, um, obviously that's the opposite side of our coin that we watch all year. We live with our revenues and our expenditures. And as you know, uh, during the year, we received several unanticipated, um, amounts from the state or the federal that came often after we'd expended the money and we would seek reimbursement for, so, um, in our local revenues, which is just what we generally do here, our food service revenues were a shortfall because all the lunches were, um, paid by a federal source, so therefore that was a shortfall in, in our local revenue there. We weren't able to serve students in the cafeteria, so therefore some of those, those ex, extra things kids would buy didn't get sold because there was a packaged meal. The state revenues are a little higher than expected. Our adequacy aid for fiscal year twenty one did reduce by eleven thousand dollars. However, our special ed in, aid increased by eighty-two thousand, so there was a net increase in that tranche. And then in the federal revenues, um, due to all the, the, the cares money, the, the go for funds, which you remember the town partnered with us to allow to be able to piggyback on their application, um, the supplemental public school. Where everyone was given a two hundred dollar per, per child stipend, but we were able to put together extra expenditures and take part of a second funding batch. We didn't get one for one, but I think we were reimbursed at about seventy percent, if I remember, of our expenditures. So the federal revenues were a little higher than expected too. So before I go on to our favorite topic, the fund balance, um, any questions on revenues for me? Oh, right. So this is the number everybody waits for all year. It's like Christmas, Christmas in July. We have to file two forms at the state, which I mentioned earlier, um, the DOE twenty-five, and then we have one for the department of revenue, which is, um, just the, the, called the MS twenty-five. Both of them, I think, are in a folder for you to sign a cover sheet at some point.
Patty has them back, we've all signed them.
Oh, thank you.
Susan needs to sign them and Heather needs to sign them.
Okay.
But Patty's going to get them.
Okay, great, thank you. So the forms were attached, um, and I won't bore you with all of it because there's like twenty-eight pages of spreadsheets there, but basically what it does is we kind of break down all of our expenditures, all of our revenues in the way that the state dictates. The very first part of the, of the form is our balance sheet. And for most of us in, in general world, balance sheet isn't something that most of us think a lot about. It's basically, it's the difference between all the assets you have. You deduct your liabilities from that and what's left over is, is your, um, your, your equity or in this case, it's a kind of our fund balance. So while our expenditures do make up a significant, unexpended expenditures do make up a significant piece of that, there are a lot of components that go into that final gel number. It doesn't translate, um, one for one, but we tried to present, um, to you. Again, you'll see a lot of the same repetitive things with our expenditures that were left and the reasons. But we tried to kind of present to you what looks, what it looks like on the balance sheet and how we get down to our unassigned fund balance. In ways that it's a little less accounty, counting like. So our unexpended, um, balance of appropriations, of course, that plays in, any extra revenues, that plays in. We've already talked about unencumbered month, uh, amounts from the previous year, like the purchase orders, um, that we give back if we aren't able to, um, expend. In this year, that was deducted because we voted to do that. A net increase in any of our committed fund balances, that's basically just auditing adjustments. And then finally, the last component we take out is the amount that was voted on by the board, um, the two and a half percent contingent balance to, um, that we are able to retain. So that brings us to an unassigned fund balance to reduce taxes of all the funds, um, to one million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars. So that is the number that you'll see when we, um, submit our financials, that's the number that will help offset our tax rate for the next year. Obviously, our goal was not to return that amount. Our goal would have been to spend every last bit on kids, um, but it just really wasn't, um, something we were able to do this year.
I do want to say too, that it's really, this balance is a combination of kind of multiple, multiple things that happened. One of the things that Jana mentioned, which is really important, is that we didn't, um, run certain programming options for kids that we otherwise would. The other side of that is we all heard about money being made available to us from the federal government. And so if that hadn't been there, then we would have spent, and, and, and that grant money hadn't been there, then we would have spent that money instead.
Yes.
Out of our operating budget. And so by aggressively going after every dime that was made available to us, we're able to have this amount of money to turn back over to the taxpayers. So, you know, one of the things that I say frequently is that the taxpayer should be the court of last resort. And, uh, when you are able to take advantage of that, then you can acquire these types of savings. And so, um, as you know, I was a proponent of having a full-time business administrator in our school district and an assistant superintendent. And they have already paid for themselves by being able to have the time available to focus their attention on capturing and taking advantage of opportunities as they're presented. So I just wanted to highlight the value of having a Jana Mellon on staff that is, you know, able to devote her time and attention to that so that we can, we can, you know, balance our kind of competing goals of providing a high quality education for kids and doing it in a way that's affordable to the taxpayers of the community. So, um, I just wanted to point out, you know, the value and benefit of, of, of the actions we took in the last year and how it, it translates into things that are positive for us here in our community.
Yeah, and I said this last year and earlier this year, and I'll say it again. Like this is really an unusual circumstance, it does not mean the school does not need the amount of money we budget for. Just that in this particular instance, we're fortunate enough to return one point five million dollars. And then, uh, just a kind of clarification, that so the retained fund balance of two point five percent, it's there as an emergency amount and it'll be returned next year should we not spend it, which I don't think we ever have, at least as far as, yeah.
As to my knowledge, we have never in Newmarket, um, it was voted in two thousand fourteen as something we could retain.
Yep.
You'll read a little further in my report, the legislation just changed on that and they have increased it to allow, uh, s- schools to retain up to five percent, which is new. Uh, but remember I brought that to you in the spring and we, we felt that two point five percent was, was, um, still valid. So what happens is basically last year's two point five percent that we didn't touch is boiled into this, um, fund balance.
One point five.
And then we retain two point five for the next year. So yes, the, it's the, the change goes up a little bit based on the nest, net assessment, but it's kind of the same, uh, same figure. Yeah, and, and I thank you, Dr. Givens, for bringing up those points. One thing that I did want to mention and, um, and I know when we talked about the grants that had come through, but we had salaries that we were able to pay last year out of grants that had we not been able to access those grants looked a lot different. We were able to get about forty thousand dollars worth of food service expenses, um, reimbursed last year out of a grant. And again, that, that would have just come from, from here. So, yeah, there's, there's an awful lot of activity that's boiled into this number. And first and foremost is, um, you know, things that we missed, kids missed out on, so. Any questions on, on that? That can be a very weighty, um.
I do have one question, it's not exactly related to this, if, if the board will indulge me for a second. I, I don't know if this is something you're able to find out, but, so next year for two thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the state funding is expected to go down a significant amount.
Are you talking adequacy or are you talking in general on all the grants?
Well, state funding from, um, I guess Health Bill one and two that cut past that reduced the amount of funding going towards, I'd have to look, I'm not sure. I don't think it's an adequacy grant, I think it's just the.
I can do a little research, I'm not sure which, I'll have to look back and see which one goes to those bills. I do know that adequacy aid, uh, for Newmarket for this coming year, um, they've already set and it's a little bit higher. They changed the funding formula to allow us to use the free and reduced. I believe nineteen twenty. So that's going to be a little higher, but I can tell you that our grant allocations in pretty much across the board i- in title one, title two, title four, all of those grants, um, are down, uh.
I'll, I'll send you what I was reading.
Those are federal grants.
Yeah, the federal grants. Yeah, it wasn't through the state, but that's.
State that. I'm just curious if it, if it is something that's going to affect us, if we can kind of project out what the, the possible effects might be. I'll have to find the article.
Yep.
And send it to you.
Okay. I'll, I'll look, look too, Gary. I know that there's something relative to adequacy aid funding and, um, students.
Yeah, and there's a two point five, or twenty-five million dollar reduction that the state was allocating some school funding and I don't remember specifically what it was.
But some of that could have been money that was coming to them, Gary, from some of these, uh, relief packages at the federal level. So I don't know if it is, but it could be.
I will have to look, yeah, I don't know for sure, I'll have to look.
I know what I'm, Gary, I, I was looking to, they're changing the way that might be administered, I can't remember off the top of my head what it was, but it did change.
But it just seems something like, if we can kind of project out the impact, we should probably think about that. Potential impact.
Yeah. Well, do let us know.
Yeah, absolutely, I will, thank you.
Two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty, twenty-one in a nutshell, um, we're closing that out. But I wanted to also, we wanted to kind of give you a, a preview of, um, your twenty-one, twenty-two things on the horizon as well, because we're partway through that. So, um, the COVID related monies that we did receive last year, many of them were unanticipated. There's another level of audit that's required if you receive over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in any year for, um, in, in a district. I think in the past, several, several years ago, Newmarket may have been subject to that single audit, but we haven't been for many years. This year, we are. So we'll be conducting that while our financial audit is done, that piece is not quite yet done, we're looking to schedule that. And the cost for that, of course, wouldn't have been budgeted because we, uh, didn't know we were going to be subject to it. So we'll be, uh, doing that out of this year's funds, it shouldn't be, um, much more than between four and seven thousand, but it's another level. I wanted to make the board aware. FEMA, I stood in front of this board and said we had put together a whole packet and then they said schools weren't eligible and I was crushed because we had really put together all of those things. So I'm pleased to be able to share with the board that in January, we first that decision and now schools are eligible. The date range has shifted, so some of those expenditures we had before, we were able to recoup from other funding sources. But, um, it's starting January twenty-first of this past year, we are able to recoup, we tracked, we worked with our liaison at the state. And in August of this year, we submitted a claim. We walked through some of that, it included some of the disinfection services that we're having done. Uh, we had to order some additional desk guards because some of them had broken, we had some, uh, cleaning materials, equipment. And as a result of that, uh, we have submitted a claim, it has made it through two layers of the state approval. It's at the federal and then it will come back to the state and then I think it comes back to me and then back to the state again. So we have a few more steps, um, but it's in the, in the neighborhood of sixty-five thousand dollars, which was money that we didn't know we would have. So that would come on this year as a kind of an unanticipated revenue. Um, and there is, we're still tracking because we can supposedly still put in a claim through September. So we're tracking our summer expenditures as our back to school, we're hoping to put in a second. We're hoping to put in a second claim, but I wanted to get this one in as soon as possible so that we knew what we had. So that's, that's a little bright spot. We might be getting some more there. And then the next piece is kind of advisory to the board to let you know, during the tax rate setting process last year, the Department of Revenue based our tax rate in, in Newmarket on our estimated adequacy aid that we were going to receive during the year. During the year, the, the state changed the amount of adequacy aid that we were going to receive. They increased it, which is great, other than the fact that if we didn't appropriate it in the budgeting process, we can't expend it. So there are two choices, and, and I've included the exhibits that come from the state. The first, obviously, if we don't expend it, it would be returned as part of the fund balance. The second option is, you can hold a special meeting, which is akin to another ballot vote, to change, to, to get approval for the change in education funding to use that piece for something different. Of course, you would have to, we'd have to convene taxpayers, and, and it's quite a, quite a process. But it is an option available to this board to do that. We should, as we move into the next part, this should be the only year that we would have that situation because now we know what we're going to get for next year, so we can properly take that into, into consideration. So, you know, as I said, I'm presenting those two options to you. The state has strongly advised that if you wish to do that special meeting, that we do so lockstep with council. Because that is not my skill set. And, you know, I, I just think that you'd have to do it very carefully, and there'd be a very strict time, timetable and a timeline for that process, so. So that's just for the board to look at and to think about. If we do, we don't have to do anything at all. If we do nothing at all, the money will just stay in the budget, and it would be returned as part of our unrestricted fund balance.
How much is the, so the increase is four hundred eighty-five thousand?
Right.
So it's not a small amount of money.
Right.
By any stretch.
Right. Yep. So it would probably have to go for something like a, I, I did make, I will tell you, I did make a call to the bond bank, because if it was my home mortgage, I'd say, oh, let's put it down on principal. But unfortunately, you can't.
Yeah, then I'll let you do that.
Yeah, we can't do it because we were a pooled bond. I thought that that might be worth the time because that would give a longer-term savings to Newmarket. But unfortunately, that was not an option for us. So it, I think it's pretty much down to kind of like a capital project, if you wanted to, you know, reallocate it for a capital purpose or an educational purpose that, or program, you know, something like that.
Let's have our soccer field.
Now, Jana, one question I had about this is, you know, when would, when would it, if we were going to choose to do option two, when would that have to take place?
Soon.
Okay.
Very soon. We would have to, like I said, they, they are very strongly recommending that we consult with council about the timeline, and there's posting requirements for when you hold a meeting, and, and you have to have it so many days before, and.
When you're COVID.
Right. So it would be something that if the board wanted to consider, that we probably should be talking to council and seeing what we might need to do to make that happen.
You said capital project. What was the other possibility you mentioned?
I just said cap, or like a, like a, if you had like some type of program option that you guys have been thinking about, that you hadn't had the funding for, something like that. But again, remember, this is going to be a, a one-time.
Yeah.
Thing, so you wouldn't want to build something that you then couldn't sustain into the future. So that's why a capital project probably makes, makes the most sense.
So if we wanted to do the project on the windows and the electrical.
That's what I was thinking.
And combine it with the bond money, maybe that would be enough.
And do we need to spend it all on the same project?
Again, I'm going to step.
Yeah. Be interesting to find out so then we knew what our options were.
I would hate to give this board bad advice.
No, of course, yeah.
But again, this is a, this is a really, it would be a tight timeline. It would be something we would have to do lockstep with our, with our council to make sure that we met all deadlines and things.
And then we wouldn't be able to actually.
And this is with the board's purview, but would it, would it be possible to get sort of a framework soon? Sort of some thoughts that you guys might have? I know that's adding into this, but then so we can make a decision that makes sense.
Well, I guess the other question is, too, is when do we have to spend it by? Because if we have to spend it by the end of this fiscal year, I don't see how that's going to be possible with any kind of projects. This certainly with electrical upgrade, it wouldn't be, because that would be in school.
Yeah, but if we could bid it, Gary, then we have a PO in place, and we can roll it forward.
Then we can do that, so.
So what, I, I mean, this is, this is what I think, and you guys can tell me if we're offbeat, but I think that it, it might be beneficial for Susan to present us with some, Susan and Jana to present us with some plans that we would have, so we could make a decision that makes sense.
I think one of the things we could do, because I can't pull Jana off and get schools ready for school opening, but what, why don't we get a letter from one of our, you know, our attorneys, whichever one you think is most qualified, outlining what the process would be? And I can put it in the board packet for the next meeting.
Perfect.
Because that's next week. And at least we'll know what the process would be, and if we think, feel it could be pulled off and provide us with a framework for what we could actually use that money for.
Yeah, and work backwards from the latest date, we could do something.
Yeah, I definitely can.
Because it may be moot, I mean, it may be.
Right, exactly.
We may be, I don't know, I don't know until the deadline. Yeah, definitely.
That's a good plan.
I will do that.
Wow.
Okay. And then there's, there's one final down-the-road thing, and we talked about it a little earlier, that the board may want to think about as you're putting together your warrant articles. Our auditors picked up on the fact that when we voted on the, in two thousand fourteen on the contingency law, the two point five percent was actually part of the warrant article language at the time. So he, he mentioned that we may want to just do, vote to do an amendment to, in a warrant article, we would have to have the taxpayer vote again, to allow us to increase that to five, a five percent option to align with the new law. But that, again, that would have to be a warrant article. We would have to have the taxpayer.
And it would be no funding attached warrant, we would just be modifying the, the options.
But that would allow this board, if at some point you really did need, thinking you needed to go up to the five percent, you would be able to do it. So just food for thought as we go into budget.
Yeah, I guess the main thought would be, can we strike the amount and then just reference the law that would be applicable, so then we wouldn't have to amend it in the future.
Is that, maybe we can see if that's possible.
I, I know that they're very particular about the language of the warrant article. I think we would have to defer to council about how we, how we could word that. We're allowed to put notes in some of, under some of them.
Yeah, I know.
That can explain.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, we would, that would be a really good question. I know they have a whole, a whole template for all different kinds of things, but I think this is a new one.
Because we'd want to explain to the town that we've never spent it, but we can't include that in the warrant article because it's not appropriate.
Right, you have to be very careful. We could put together a narrative to a company that we could send out to people to explain what the rationale is. But I don't know that we, they're very limited about what they let us, put us on, on that.
But this does legally restrict us to two and a half percent.
Yes.
So it's fortunate that we did two and a half percent.
Yes, right.
That worked out well.
Yeah, it did work out well. Little foresight there.
Yeah.
All right. So I guess that's kind of my high-level summary. You have all of the exhibits attached. I've tried to give explanations to you for any, any variances that I thought you might have questions about. And with that, I guess I'd just ask, do you, if you have anything that you would like me to address further, or any other questions based on the statements?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Jana, thank you and your team for all that you do on a weekly basis with the manifest and everything that goes on behind that we don't even know about. They're always on top of things, making things done, and I appreciate it very much. I think we all do.
They are a great team, for sure. I.
And you as well.
Thank you.
I think that's it. We'll move to the next thing. We'll move to action items section. We have.
You're welcome to go home.
Thank you.
We are not going to be a fun effort.
Kitchen renovation, so not sure what I'm going to find when I get home.
Do it at work, you do it at home? Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jana.
Good night, everybody.
You too. We don't have public meetings because there were some tweaks that needed to be, so we're just going to do non-public. So I seek a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from August fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Swanson. Any amendments to those minutes? I don't know why the D is there, I apologize. Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They're approved four to zero. We have a few generous donations, Susan.
Yes, we do. Two more backpacks with school supplies for two elementary school students. And they're up in the office, and they're really, they're very, very nice backpacks, so, with very cool colors. So we're, we're pleased to have those donations. And then the New England Dairy Food Council has given us a donation of three thousand thirty-five dollars, and that goes towards our food service program.
Excellent. I seek a motion to accept these two generous donations, the one from the New England Dairy Food Council for three thousand thirty-five dollars, and the anonymous donation of two backpacks for elementary school students and supplies.
Some move.
We have a motion from Mr. Swanson. I need a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. McKinney. As always, we are grateful for all these donations that we receive, so thank you very much. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They're approved.
Okay, so we have a couple of leaves of absences that have been requested. One from Emily Sterns, who is our library media specialist at the elementary school, requesting a child-rearing leave from January first to April the fourth. Mr. Pine felt that we could accommodate her request, and so we're recommending that you support that. Elena Zaidius, who is a fourth-grade teacher, has requested leave for the upcoming school year. We do have a replacement that we've hired for her. And Nicole Hoover, who is a paraprofessional, has requested leave of absence for the upcoming year, so she can pursue higher educational degree program there. So we're recommending that you approve their requests.
I seek a motion to approve all of these leave requests that are listed in the document.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Hammacher. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They're approved.
Next, we just received a request from Ms. Hatfield to release her from her contract as a ninth-grade science teacher. So August eighteenth is very late. So, you know, we would like to support people when they want to make a move. It's to a school district nearby, but it's middle school, and she originally wanted to be a middle school teacher, and took the high school position here, and has the opportunity to move back to her community as a middle school teacher. So we'd like to support her in that. Also, late-breaking news, we have found a certified teacher in science, three years of experience, coming to. We're going to be able to honor that, that request. She started in our new higher orientation already this week. I interviewed her over the weekend. I know, amazing. So we do have a replacement, but the, the motion on the floor is to release her from her contract if we find a suitable replacement. And of course, like I said, we want to always support people if we can.
I request a motion to approve the request based upon the fact that we have found a suitable replacement.
Some move.
Motion for Mr. Swanson. I need a second.
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Hammacher. Let's move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Has there been any guidance counselor?
No. Nope. We had somebody that we thought might be a good candidate, but it didn't work out. So we're back to advertising. The good news is, is the woman that we hired as the interim to take over ELO and athletics was a previously director of guidance. So at least we have a little bit of, not that, you know.
She's got a lot of hats.
She's going to, yeah, but at least we have at least, it's not what we hired her for, but I mean, if we have to, you know, dial back a little bit on the ELO program development so that we can meet the need, the student-facing needs, then of course we'll, we'll do that, but.
And can we even run the ELO program with COVID? Like, that's.
Well, we would just be mostly designing it this year, Elizabeth, because we don't have anything in place. So it's just we wouldn't get to that work if the work that's, you know, student-facing needs to be done.
Going back, going back like a month. We had an ELO program, but it was never a designed program. There was never any curriculum, per se, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, my understanding is that at some point in time, you had an ELO coordinator. I don't know, that was pre.
Yeah, it was pre-year.
My arrival. And I don't know when it wa, I don't know how, how long ago it was.
Three years ago that we got.
Okay. But it, it certainly wasn't here when I, when I got here, so.
But there was nothing for you to follow.
No, there was nothing, there was nothing in place. There was nothing handed off, there was no files, there was nothing, there was nothing to, you know, jump off from, so.
And it's too bad, because I remember vividly, students coming in here with employers, giving us presentations, a florist, several different things, and it just, you know, something, so now we can rebuild it.
My son was in real estate for the longest time.
Real estate.
Well, Vassier.
Yes.
I know, I, I heard that he was the coordinator, and then he became a special educator when the program was eliminated or something, and I, I, you know, I'm just.
But we're going to have, we're going to start.
We're going to start all over again.
So we're starting over.
But it's a great opportunity.
Right now.
It's one of those things that I, that's one of those programs I love.
Well, I mean, it just gives people a whole extended learning opportunity.
Right.
Yeah.
And if you're not a, a strong student, it gives you a skill outside of school.
Well, it goes in all different directions, you know? And my vision would be that all kids have some kind of an internship experience in their senior year, that I think that that is, if you can develop a strong internship program, you know, where kids get to explore, you know, working with a, a company in areas that they are hoping to maybe pursue later on in their life, you know? If not in college or whatever.
Remember, he conducted the band.
That was amazing.
Yeah, like we, there were so many things.
Yes.
We'll get there.
So it, it could be that, it could be that, you know, somebody's, you know, a savant in mathematics or something, and that, you know, we have a partnership with MIT, and so they can have an extended opportunity in that way to be able to take a college course or something. So extended learning can be, you know, meet the needs of all students in different. But, you know, we may not get to that if we don't have a middle school guidance counselor, and then the person we hired to do that, you know, because she's qualified to, might be focusing attention on guidance services for kids. So we'll get there. So the next item on our agenda tonight is confirmation of all coaches. So these are the coaches that we had hired as a Friday, and Mr. Dalton announced last night that he was able to find coaches for all levels of sports. So there's more, but just, you know, as a Friday, these are the ones that I had, and we've appointed and sent out contracts this week for junior high sports as well. So we're going to actually be able to run, and I'm so excited about this, all levels of sports at the secondary level.
And I'm very excited, children.
Yeah. So we're really happy about that.
I seek a motion to confirm the coaching appointments that have been made thus far this, for the fall season.
Some move, sorry, second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney with a second from Mr. Swanson, any discussion? It's exciting to have this stuff back, all of it, um.
Can I ask real quick, if there are coaches that are not listed on here?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, they probably need to get started at the beginning of the school year, and we're not meeting in a few weeks, are you able to offer a contract?
Yes, you authorized me to go ahead and move forward and issue the contracts on your behalf so that we don't lose anybody and we can move along, and then I.
Through September or October?
Then I report to you and you just confirm what I've done on your behalf.
Okay. I don't remember, we did it through.
Oh, yes, I think it was October, was it September thirtieth?
September or October.
September or something like that, yes. And we do, Andrew, to that point, have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday at five. So we have it covered both ways.
No, I'm issuing con, actively issuing contracts.
Yes, but thank you for bringing that up, because it's a, it's an important thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, and that's the reason why we were able to move forward with the science teacher so quickly. If I had to wait, you know, because the person had two offers, one here and one in another school district, then it's very possible that I wouldn't have.
Yeah.
Been able to secure it, and we ran into that, um, last year before you gave me the authorization when we lost a Mandarin teacher. That was really, really, uh, we wound up with a good one, um, but, in the end, but it was difficult to try to, um, secure quality people timely. Okay, so the next is, uh, again, confirmation of the appointments that, um, occurred from, you know, our last meeting until now. Well, I, I will say till last Friday, or the eighteenth, was updated last, and so as I mentioned, um. Elena Zaidius, the fourth grade teacher, requested a leave of absence, um, uh, Ally Lockwood, um, was a, um, tutor. She also taught for us last year when we had to expand our core of teachers to accommodate remote, you know, one section of remote in every grade level. Um, so she, she did teach for us last year, um, and so she is going to be filling in for, uh, Ms. Zaidius for the upcoming year. Um, another change, of course, Abby Hatfield, our ninth grade science, that you just approved, her release, um, provided us with that, and we do have, um. Andrea Di Assisi's, um, filling in, uh, for her, not filling in, but being appointed to that position. And she did, uh, she joined in on Monday, we, we have three days of, uh, orientation for teachers and she was able to join us on Monday. And she's very excited to, to be with us, so, uh, that's a change, it's not reflected on yours, but, uh, that contract has been issued and signed. Moving down, um, this is another, we really, I couldn't be any more excited about the staff that we're hiring. Um, Jean Civielo is coming to. She has twenty-five years of experience as a speech-language, um, pathologist, um, and she's spent the last couple of years as a, um. Case manager, um, uh, chairperson at a high school, uh, nearby, and so she's had several years of administrative experience. And she wanted to come back and be where the action is, um, so, uh, and she was looking for a small school district where she could make connections and be part of, you know. Uh, uh, learning community that was, you know, focused on, um, you know, really providing engaging, modern learning experiences for kids, so. We are so excited to have her joining us, uh, she's got really good energy, um, very student-centered, um, and she, and she, uh. Will be with us, I think, starting in a couple of weeks because, again, they had to find her replacement, um, and before they could release her, so she'll. She won't be starting on, on day one, but she'll be joining us here in a couple of weeks, and then also over the weekend, I was able to hire a replacement for Oscar. Um, so we have an E S L. L. O. uh, candidate that, uh, we issued a contract to, and I'll put those updates on next week, so. As of right now, we have filled all of our academic positions. And we still have, we still have the guidance and we still have, um, openings, and I'm just gonna make some plugs for what we have in case there's anybody out here. In the, in the viewing audience that knows of anybody, but we have three, uh, full-time teaching positions that are substitutes. Uh, we have one at the elementary level, they would need elementary certification, we would be hiring them for the, for the year on the teacher's contract. Um, and then we have two like positions at the junior, senior high school, so if you know of anybody that is certified, even if it's a newly certified teacher. Um, who's looking for a position, you know, please do send Patty Banfield your, uh, application, uh, certification transcripts and a letter of interest. So those are the positions that we have that are actual teaching positions, also, of course, the guidance counselor at the junior, senior high school, that position's open. Um, and then, you know, we have struggled, as everybody around us has struggled, to, uh, get even applicants for any hourly positions, and that doesn't matter what they are. Custodians, um, you know, or maintenance, eh, food service, paraprofessionals, uh, they just aren't there. So, um, it's not just us, it's everywhere, the bus drivers, we heard that, we've had to make modifications there, uh, they don't have enough bus drivers to, um, be able to accommodate. That we paid for, so they're gonna have to do some loop runs, uh, over at the elementary school, um, which is not ideal, it's not what we want, but, you know, we'll get the kids to and fro. But it's just gonna make their lau, the, the routes longer, so now we're coming up with, okay, that means that if, if, if. If the, uh, students are not going, going to be able to go on the first bus run, then now we're gonna have to cohort them at the end of the day, we're gonna have to pay for. Maybe paraprofessionals, you know, to, to supervise them until the bus comes back around, so it, you know, all of these are modifications that we're constantly having to make, but, um.
And this is why it took so long, the bus schedule, because there really, there were so many issues to get everything finalized, I know there's a lot of frustration. On that part, but that explains why we were struggling.
It's a, you know, staffing shortage, and it's just isn't to us, it's everywhere, it's everywhere for people that are kind of in this, uh. You know, like, like to stay locally or looking for local employment, and there's more demand for people than there are people to fill that demand. So, you know, any, anyone out there, uh, looking for some work, we would, we would love to have applicants. And, uh, if, if you have a C D. L. license and, you know, we're happy to, you know, with the bus company, um, that you're out there. I think, uh, I did talk to Amy, I will say, J. Gandhi, over at the rec department, she said she is fully staffed for her before and after-school program. Um, I know that, um, Ray is still looking for some, some help there too, but I know that Amy is fully staffed for before and after-school right now, so. Uh, that's, that's where we are with hiring, it's not lack of effort, you know, anything that comes across, we, we will interview, but again, we are not gonna hire, uh, people that can't. You know, meet basic needs, uh.
I seek a motion to confirm the appointments of the professional staff hired since our last meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Hammacher, any discussion? Thank you, Susan, looking forward to some great new candidates.
Yes.
We'll move to the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Um, the next meeting, as we just said, is scheduled for September second at five P. M., and I seek a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Uh, Kim, you and I talked earlier and wanted to discuss the survey, um, I did bring it up with the chair, we were told about a couple of surveys last week. And I'd be interested in seeing with them, uh, seeing them, I don't know if the rest of the board is interested in.
It's not, not, it's not part of our job.
One of the things that Gary and I talked about is that, um, when we met the last meeting, we talked about, was just decided by the board that we would allow the. Climate and Culture Committee and Susan to work on the climate and culture piece of things, and so my belief at that time was that we had addressed that issue and that we could move forward.
But as we talked about earlier, I think you and I talked about the D O. E. survey. I think that may have been the meeting before, and talked about how for the Climate and Culture Committee do that. The surveys last week were, I think, presented by the union to the board, or that was the intent, I don't.
I mean, I, I do.
I haven't been.
I do know that it was, you know, the, the process was supposed to be a collaborative effort between the administration and the, the unions for those, that did not occur with this one. Susan has requested that, that, um. They keep it as they had not, all communication from them to us is supposed to go through her, that did not happen. Um, and I think that my, my, my belief on it is that we had decided that they were going to do it, they're focused on doing some inward-facing things to. Initially with climate and culture, before Susan even came, things that have worked, things that we need to address to move forward, so.
I'm just confused, because it, didn't it go through her, those survey, they didn't come to us?
No.
Did they go to you?
No.
So no one's been notified about them?
At the meeting.
No, I haven't, I haven't seen the survey, I have not seen anything about it.
And you haven't received a survey?
From the paraprofessional, I have not, I wasn't aware of it.
And from the, uh, for either union?
I, uh, had a conversation with the leadership of the union and, uh, the teachers' union, and we're going to meet collaboratively and have a conversation about that, so.
I was under the impression that you, from what was said, that you'd received surveys, but I guess not, all right.
Anything further on that? I seek a motion to adjourn at seven o'clock P. M.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Swanson to adjourn the meeting at seven o'clock, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.